I hereby call to order the Village of Riverside Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting for Wednesday, August 28th. Ann, could you please call the roll?
Sure. Commissioner Pelletier?
I'm here.
Commissioner Miller?
Here.
Commissioner, sorry, Commissioner Braun?
Here.
Commissioner Matthews?
Here.
Chairperson Hennigan?
Here.
We have a forum. The first item on our agenda tonight is approval of the special meeting minutes of August 8th, 2024. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Does anyone have any changes? Ann, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Pelletier?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Epstein.
Commissioner Matthews?
Aye.
Commissioner Braun?
Aye.
Chairperson Hennigan?
Aye.
Next up, I do not, or I should, I should ask, is there anyone who would like to speak during this time about an item that is not on the agenda? Seeing none, we can move on to the liaison reports.
Sure. On August 15th, the village board approved the application for the special use of the Montessori school at 53 North Gate Road, which came before the commission on June 26th. The board also approved the four applications related to the starbuds development. The board denied the application for a variation to allow a wider driveway than permitted by the zoning code at 162 North Gate Road. However, they did approve the owner's request to allow the wider driveway as an accommodation under the Americans with Disabilities Act.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Ann? Okay.
Oh, I had one question.
Yes.
Related to the starbuds facility, have, at what point would they be submitting requests to extend their hours to midnight? Have they already done that?
They did mention midnight during the meeting. I'm not, I think that might have been a misstatement. I don't believe that there is a request to extend their hours to midnight.
Okay, I was just curious.
I think that was how long the lights were going to be on, not the opening hours.
Yeah, well, he said something like, we'd be open until midnight and we'd turn it off within a half hour of that. That's what I thought he said, anyway. That's fine. I was just curious, there's no application right now?
There is none. All right, moving on to new business. Item PZ 24-0009, a lot combination at 121 South Coat Road. This is a public hearing to consider, I'm sorry, I didn't write that down correctly. Public hearing to consider request to combine two lots into one lot of record. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. The notice of the public hearing was published in the landmark on August 7th, 2024, and will be marked as an exhibit. The remaining application materials will be marked as a second exhibit. Is there a motion to approve the exhibits?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, if there's anyone in the audience who plans to give testimony, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear the testimony that you will give is true to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Ann, would you like to go ahead?
Sure. I'll give a brief presentation, then we'll turn it over to you. This application is fairly straightforward, even though it's a lot combination, it's a type of subdivision per our code, which is why you're provided for the standards for subdivision in your packet. The property owners are requesting to combine their property, which, at 121 South Coat Road, which consists of two lots into one, so effectively erasing that center dividing line. The property consists of two parcels, one of which is developed with a house and garage, the other is undeveloped. The only effect on zoning standards would be the five-foot setback line on either side of the center property line would be eliminated when that center property line is eliminated in combining the parcels. If the owners or a future property owner wanted to re-subdivide the lot in the future, they would need to apply for a subdivision application and meet the standards that are listed for subdivision in the zoning code. On August 8th, the Preservation Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the application. Again, the standards are listed for you in section 485 in your packet, and the requested action is to provide a recommendation to the village board on whether the application should be approved or denied based on those standards. And Glenn, do you pronounce your last name Zaggon?
Zaggon.
Zaggon, thank you. Glenn Zaggon, representing the applicants, is here tonight.
Go ahead.
Okay. Hi, as Ann mentioned, I'm Glenn Zaggon. I'm an architect with Crimson Design and Construction. I'm here with Jim and Nicole Ungaro, and we're in the process of basically taking these two lots and assuming they get combined, renovating the existing home, adding a second-story addition, and having an attached garage with a master suite above. It will adhere it all to the guidelines of the village as far as setbacks, garage, front-facing, all that kind of stuff, not doing that. And we're really in the process now of designing and hope to start construction this fall.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? All right. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up, we will have discussion on the request. Anyone have any comments, questions, concerns? No? Would anyone like to make a motion?
I would move that we recommend to approve the subdivision as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, let's take a look at the standards for subdivisions. Looks like we have eight standards. No subdivision shall be approved. That would negatively impact the village's National Historic Landmark designation or landmarks listed in the code. And subdivisions that are contrary to the general plan's preference for large residential lots should be approved only after careful consideration of the current character of the immediate area.
It doesn't, yeah, it doesn't really apply.
Lots created by subdivision shall conform to the requirements of the zoning ordinance. That appears to be the case here.
That's true, yes.
Every lot created by subdivision shall front any public street and be substantially similar in shape to those lots on the same block.
I think that's true.
That's true, right.
Every parcel of land which is subdivided into two or more lots shall be divided. That does not apply here. Letter E, subdivision shall protect to the maximum degree possible historic sites, scenic points, desirable areas, and other environmentally sensitive features worthy of continued preservation.
As far as we know, that's satisfied. We have no evidence to the contrary.
F, large existing trees should be preserved wherever possible. More of a case when you're splitting into smaller lots, not here. No person may fill store, dispose of earth materials. I don't know that this is really a standard, more of a code requirement. And then we have some requirements for public improvements that will presumably be met. All right, any further discussion? Ann, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Pelletier?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Braun?
Aye.
Commissioner Matthews?
Aye.
Chairperson Hennigan?
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Just look forward to the village board for final action.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, next on our agenda is a discussion regarding gateway signage. Ann?
Yes. So this is, item is for discussion and feedback only. We're not seeking a decision or a vote from the commission, just your feedback. There are two locations where the village is considering installing gateway signage at the corner of Harlem and Long Common and at Harlem and East Burlington. For the commission's review, we included exhibits provided to the village board in July and August. But your comments will help focus our next steps of this project to provide the village board with additional information to build consensus on a design. This was also going, going to be discussed by, I believe, Landscape Advisory and Economic Development Commission as well. So we'll have the benefit of their input as well. Based on your feedback from the boards and commissions, village will then work with Point B, which is a marketing firm, I believe, to identify renderings for possible gateway elements. So in your memo, there were two specific points you were asked to consider and provide feedback on. The favorable elements of the sign examples, either through the previous branding exercise or the newer concept designs from the village's engineer, and we'll go through those, I'll bring those up for your reference. And if there are any design styles, scale, or other elements of the signage that would be favorable or unfavorable for gateway or wayfinding options. So a fairly broad request, but I'll refer now to the visuals so that you can provide feedback on those.
Ann, would you like us to give you comments as you go through each one, or?
As you like.
Okay.
I don't want to restrict you in any way or your creativity, so. So I'll just, how about I scroll through these and take your comments, and then if you have any, as the mood strikes you, if you want to provide additional feedback, please do.
Okay, I would say for this one, in general, I like the idea of the water tower structure as opposed to a lamp post, because I think the lamp post is going to get totally lost in the clutter. So that's why I like the more substantial sign post, even though it's going to cost more. And I like that style of sign better than the big one that's more branded. I find it could be dated very quickly. It's fine for me for like wayfinding, but I think here you just want to say, you just want to notify people that this is where Riverside starts. So those are two comments I have on those things.
So my comment is more general. If it was me, I would, I would not do this at all. And there's, and there's a few reasons. I mean, there's, so there's two main reasons, and I don't want to, you know, speak all night, because we can get out of here at a reasonable hour tonight. First off, aesthetically, I mean, this corner is already a mess. I mean, and I don't mean that pejoratively. I just mean from the point that you have, you know, the dentist's office with the big sign, you've got the, you know, the new restaurant has a big sign there, you've got the mini mart across the street, it's, there's four separate traffic signals, there's, I'm pretty sure there's like other, you know, regular signs there. And then on the other side of the streets, you've got the Berwyn Library, and you've got that massive storage facility. So there's just, there's a lot going on there. And I really don't see, you know, first off, I think that any wayfare, any signage, even like the big lighthouse or whatever, whatever that is, I guess that's an nod to our seafaring heritage. Any of that, it's going, it's going to be lost, first of all, I think, in this, you know, what we have here. And secondly, I'm not convinced that it isn't dangerous. You know, once you start putting more signs up, more, more things for people to look at on an already busy street, I, I, I think we need to consider that. And I just don't think, you know, this is Harlem and Long Common, it's a, it's a very busy intersection. People know where Riverside is already. This works on Forest Avenue, because, you know, you see the signs on Forest. You've got a half-block drive through, through a forest preserve, you cross the river, then you get on Forest, which is a lot of like architecturally interesting, you know, diverse homes and apartments. So it works there. Here, I just, I wouldn't do it. The second reason I'm against it is strictly cost. Just looking at the cost estimates, a range between roughly $100,000 and $200,000. And I'm not certain if this money is, if it's coming from a, from Riverside funds, or we're applying for grants to do this. And, you know, certainly if the former, I just don't think it's a good use of taxpayer money to do this. I can't really see justifying this. I mean, we're about to spend 22 million on a new police station, which I think is a fine use of taxpayer money for a new police fire station. I think there's other things that need to be done. I don't think, I don't think this is it. So that would be my recommendation. Don't do it. And as far as doing it on the other location, I have the same view. I just don't think it's an appropriate place for this welcome to Riverside signage. I don't see a point.
I would second everything that Commissioner Matthews has just said. I would add that this particular picture here, I would think we would have a line of sight issue as well. I just don't think it's safe. But as I said, for all of the reasons that Commissioner Matthews has stated, I'm in complete agreement.
Do you want me to continue to scroll down to show some different photos, or does anyone want to provide additional?
Just on this one, I, I love the mini water tower concept. I think it looks fantastic on Forest. Not that I'm opposed to lighthouses, those are great, too. But, but I really like the one on Forest. But I do share some of Commissioner Matthews' concerns about the amount of visual clutter at this location. It just seems like we're, we're adding a lot, and that's, that's a very prominent, you know, landmark, or will be, in, in a place where there's already a lot of other stuff to look at. So, you know, I really like it just looking just at the tower itself, but in this particular location, I don't know that it's the best choice. The other location, possibly. I don't know. But in this one, I'm, I'm less convinced.
I would prefer to see something more subtle signaling, you know, kind of the entrance to the village, more landscape than hardscape, and less intrusive, I guess, than the mini water tower. I had a couple more comments, if I might. I agree with what Commissioner Matthews and Commissioner Braun said. I do agree with that sentiment. But if we were to go ahead, if the village board and the other powers that be said we really want to have something here, and they've already worked out an agreement with the owner of Shining Smiles, their property there and all the rest, just a couple other things I would say would be, I don't love the planter, and I don't love the little tree, because, and I don't love the little tree in the planter. If I was to do a tree there, I would just do a tree. And then, I assume it has to be a small tree because of eye dot. So I would say, you know, you need to talk to the forester, possibly a bush would be better, like a bottle, a bottle brush buckeye or something like that. Something that's not just a little ornamental tree, but something that's more representative of Riverside, you know, and Olmstedian kind of feel. See, I don't, I don't think that the planter is worth it, because it is clutter, and it's something that's got to be maintained. And I don't, I just, yeah, there's a lot there. I also don't like the pavers. I noticed that the Preservation Commission, some people there said they didn't really care for the pavers. I agree, the pavers are probably expensive, and they're not really going to be preventing a lot of groundwater runoff, or surface water runoff there. If anything, maybe there'd be a way to simply do colored concrete, or maybe a little elevation change or something to kind of set off that area. Just something far less expensive than the pavers. And then as far as, the same thing at Forest, I'd have all the similar comments, but there may be, there'll be a little more landscaping that'll make it look nice. And I'm also wondering why this isn't being discussed for the entrance at 31st Street, which is a little bit more, slightly more bucolic than this area, 31st Street and Des Plaines. That was discussed, I think, years ago, and nothing's ever been done there to make, to put, that's more of an entrance to Riverside. Yeah, that's a good point. It wasn't than on busy Harlem.
Okay.
So it could be just because, again, they have an agreement with the owner of the property there already to have an entrance sign. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Is there, just out of curiosity, is there support for those who maybe aren't in favor of signage or the water tower-like structure? And regarding the, the planter, I think one of the concerns that Dan Tab brought up was the amount of salt that will be used in that area. And so I think integrating landscaping at-grade may be a problem for that. And I think perhaps the planter was both a nod to the planners in the Central Business District and an attempt to get the salt away from the plantings in there. But with that as a consideration, does the commission generally support the village having an easement over that portion of the property and maintaining some sort of landscaping, maybe to soften the look of that intersection as you approach Riverside, with or without a sign?
I agree with maintaining an easement there, yes, for future use, even if we don't do anything right now, yeah.
I would be in support of landscaping to soften.
Landscaping, okay. If there's a way maybe to do, sorry, Commissioner Miller was maybe not in favor of the planter.
No, I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm not in favor of, I'm fine with typical landscaping.
Or was it, I'm sorry, I forget who was, I forget who was maybe not in favor of the planter.
I don't really like the planter much. I agree that it looks similar to what's downtown, but it does seem sort of out of place there and kind of shoehorned.
Oh, okay.
And the other thing is, there was an issue about some of the pictures, there's grass in that little island there, and some of there, there's just concrete. Again, that's something I'm indifferent to. I don't think there's a need to have grass there. I mean, it's, again, it's a very small area as far as surface water. So if that's something that has to be maintained and mowed by the village, I don't know if that's worth it.
I think the difficulty in maintaining grass would be, again, that salt. So getting something up and away from that.
So I don't think that's, to me, that's not important, just to increase impervious surface by a tiny bit.
I'd definitely like to see landscaping there. If it's, you know, at-grade would be best, I think. But if that can't be done, a planter would be okay. But there are a few concepts that didn't show any sort of landscaping there, and the signage just looked very out of place in those.
I mean, one thing I would say is that if you had something like that water tower, we don't know what's going to happen with that property in five years, 10 years, 20 years, 30 years. Whereas something like that could stand sort of the test of time long-term, you know, 40 years from now, and that could still be a wayfinding signage for the village of Riverside, and other things might change around it, which is another reason why I'm not so thrilled about the planter. It's like, that can come or go, that sort of in fashion maybe, but the water tower can be, I don't know, something that's, is going to be there for a while. Like, I assume the one at Forest has been there for a while. I don't, I've been here.
Okay.
All right. Would you like me to scroll through the photos and provide any additional comments, or do we have everything that we?
Please do. I do have a few thoughts.
Okay, just, just in case you, you know, there's some inspiration there, a thought occurs to you that didn't before.
I definitely don't prefer that signage.
Oh, I'm sorry, the blade sign, yeah. And this, it's hard to see in this, but there is a, almost a little Riverside green sign there.
And that's just for the purpose of the picture, the actual, it won't be projecting above the sidewalk like that, will it?
I believe there may be, clearance would be consideration, not sure what.
I think you might have said something about a clearance, like seven feet, two inches or something. And I assume with that, there's also a sign going down Harlem. What would that be, towards the north for people?
It could be that that blade sign is in fact meant to be parallel to Harlem instead of perpendicular, so it's not within the, right of way.
Okay.
All right.
So I think that just kind of gets lost. I mean, no one's going to notice that. Not having anything as Riverside sign there is good as having something like that, that little lamp post.
Oh, I believe that was a reference to that Riverside sign on the lamp post.
I'd just say no to this. I don't like this at all. It's too much.
No, because they're going to rebrand that anyway in 10 years, right?
Right. Yeah, what's the point of?
Yeah, I wouldn't do anything like that.
I also don't think that the, the light fixture is necessary. There's too, too many, too much lighting in that, on that intersection anyway. It's not, it's an unnecessary expense. So these are just to show the option of?
Having that one sign, and that's it. And no landscaping. Just, I think, to provide some direction so folks know, maybe aren't familiar with Riverside, with how to get downtown to the, some of the stores.
Was there, was there a study commissioned or anything that, are people having a hard time finding Riverside? Is that the problem?
I believe the desire, and this is, this was before my time, but I believe the desire from local businesses and the Economic Development Commission, the recommendation was to provide some guidance for folks who maybe drive by and confuse understandably Riverside and North Riverside and Berwyn, and they're not entirely sure about where to turn to get to downtown Riverside. They're maybe not from the area or just not familiar.
When I look at it, it's just in the previous pictures you had, whereas it's just the lamp post with the sign. If we really needed just a sign there, I would say, again, that that might get lost, but if you had that style, where you have like two stanchions, would be a little more substantial, and probably the cost would not be much greater or any greater. And it just takes up more space. And it's, I think that might be better, just to give people's notice. But I'm not a sign person, so.
Yeah, I think that, that could be a good idea as well. And I do agree with Commissioner Braun that we really don't need the light pole function, or the light function of that at this location.
Okay. This is referenced to the location. I believe these are, if not the same, quite similar. These are the various sign designs. Oh, and these are some, some reference signs.
Yeah, something like this, if we just really, if the business people really wanted a sign, to me, would get people's attention more than the light lamp post. Maybe not this big, but that style, I think.
And I believe one of the suggestions was to have these individual pin-mounted letters maybe on that planter that we looked at. That was one of the thoughts.
Rather, that would be rather than a post or a lighthouse or?
I believe that was, that was the thought, one of the suggestions. Obviously, that would be quite low to the ground. However, if you had contrasting colors, you know, with a lighter color of the planter and a darker letter.
That could be nice.
Mm-hmm.
A little, a little subtler.
Just another reference photo. Just a map showing the locations, and here are some reference photos of the existing directional signs. I was looking to see if there was one for, is it 31st and Des Plaines that was mentioned as a possible location?
Right.
It's, okay.
Yeah. Look where the church is, the Lutheran church is.
This is the church here, correct?
Yeah, that's right. So somewhere, again, you'd have the same issue, but I guess in that median, you could do a?
I think the idea was to draw people who are in here to go straight and so turn right, I suppose. Okay. And then we just had the general sign designs that were provided. But I think I got plenty of feedback from y'all, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ann. All right, next up, we have old business, our discussion regarding impervious surface standards.
Yes, this is an item in the commission's 2024 work plan, and it's been a topic of interest for a few years. The commission last discussed impervious surface standards on March 27th. Now that we have several large applications resolved, I'd like to return to this topic. Chairperson Hennigan and Commissioner Matthews weren't able to attend that meeting in March, and it's been some time since we've discussed this. So I just wanted to briefly revisit it and primarily prepare for more in-depth discussion of this topic at our meetings this fall. So just as a reminder, the, the two goals that we have are, of this discussion is, one, to promote sustainability by recommending zoning ordinance amendments that encourage the use of permeable surfaces and living infrastructure. That living infrastructure could include something like a rain garden. And then, two, is to recommend zoning ordinance amendments to strengthen and clarify the village's approach to stormwater management and retention. And so to do that, our work plan effectively broadly consists of and retention. And so to do that, our work plan effectively broadly consists of two general areas. We're going to examine how other communities define and manage impervious surfaces. And then once we look at what the possibilities and the best practices are in other communities, staff will recommend potential amendments to the zoning ordinance to incorporate the standards and practices that make sense for the village. So in the, in that last meeting in March, we discussed the village's definition of impervious surface, other communities' definitions and the types of impervious or semi-pervious surfaces regulated by other communities. Those surfaces included decks, gravel, ponds, swimming pools and hot tubs. There are other surfaces out there that are going to be incorporated into our research. And during that March meeting, the commissioners provided really beneficial feedback on those topics, which is outlined in the meeting minutes that were included in the agenda packet. I'll incorporate those comments into our research moving forward. So the plan, again, is just to have a deeper review of definitions and best practices at the next meeting, as well as some draft definitions for your review. Get your feedback on those. And based on that discussion, we'll draft potential amendments for your consideration and feedback. So how are we going to apply those definitions in practice in the village? Once we have a clear set of recommended amendments, we'll have a public hearing and move forward with this and hopefully wrap this up. If you have any reactions or feedback on the process or on what we've discussed so far, I'd like to incorporate that into my research for future meetings. But primarily, I wanted to set the table for our future conversations on this topic. So I'm not asking you to take, take action at this time, but if you have any comments, I'd love to hear them.
Is part of your research to kind of outline how we define and regulate impervious and drainage slash retention now?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't really have any comments at, at this time. I'm just looking forward to bringing this all together and bringing this home. Finally, we've been talking about it for quite some time.
I don't have any comments. I just appreciate all of the work that you're putting into this. I would like to recognize that.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate that. All right. I do have some comments. Sorry, I know we had a short meeting, but I did have a few comments, which I hope will be constructive and helpful. I looked at all those definite, all the other villages that you had. So the ones that I thought had good definitions were, that maybe we could build on. And I don't think ours is really that terrible. It's just that there's, in practice, there was never any application of how permeability was really decided. But the ones that I liked were La Grange's, Elmhurst's, Hinsdale's and King County, King County, Washington. I thought those were, were good definitions. And then one that sort of intrigued me was Hampton, New Hampshire's, where they had the great deal of specificity on decks, which I didn't really understand. So I'm wondering if it's beneficial maybe to like call them up or say, what were you doing here and what are the things that you're seeing as a deck that's six feet high versus three feet high? And, you know, they must have thought about it because they had all, and so some of what I, I like the, the definitions were sort of discussed in, in the way where they said, you know, basically, an impermeable surface is a surface that doesn't let water to pass through. And in a past meeting, you had mentioned things like, what is it, landscape fabric and things like that. I think that's very valuable to, to have those kinds of things recognized. It doesn't mean that the village is always going to know if someone puts that down, but at least it should be, I think, in the definition. And I think there should be, you know, I think the definitions, when they're written, should really identify different types of materials to the best of the, you know, your ability, but then also allow some leeway so that we're not always having to amend the code every time some new type of surface comes up, you know, so like, or similar materials. So for example, like pervious pavers or similar materials. And one thing that occurs to me is like sometimes people have like brick patios or brick walkways. They're not maybe technically pavers and they might not have paver spacers in them. Maybe they have sand, but that could be just as permeable. And specifically, I sort of, so what I was thinking is like maybe we could have an, an impervious set of things, types of surfaces and a pervious set of surfaces and then something in the middle, which would be the semi-pervious. And I don't know if you'd need perhaps one or two, like a 50% credit, a 20% credit, because I know Oak Park has a 20% credit for pavers, which I don't think is unreasonable. And those would be, you know, porous surfaces, pervious surfaces, concrete asphalt pavers, whatever. To me, swimming pools, unless some of these villages had, you know, specific provisions for six foot of freeboard or whatever, swimming pools should be impervious. And I think there should also perhaps be a, an assumption that you have an impervious surface unless you prove otherwise. So let's say someone comes in for a building permit and they have a walkway, you know, a concrete walkway they're going to put in. And the village would assume that's an impervious surface unless they come in and they say, no, we're using, you know, porous concrete or whatever, and they can disprove that. But otherwise, there's an assumption that certain types of things are impervious. But that assumption can be rebutted by the property owner. I think that just makes it clear for application. Well, and I also, I like the, I like the reference to infiltration better than absorption. And one other thing I was curious about with all the work you have been doing with the different lots and the different parts of the village, which I think is extremely useful. The areas, have you noticed in the areas where there has been exceedances, is that due to the size of the buildings themselves, the structures, or is it more to other things on the lot? Because we only allow 30% coverage for building coverage, whatever size your lot is. And I would think in some smaller lots, that's a real problem and we might want to change that to be practical.
Are you suggesting that the building coverage for smaller lot, a lot, the allowance for building coverage in smaller lots should be larger?
Yes, there should be more capacious, yes. Allow for a decent sized house. I just don't know how that works on some of these smaller lots. And I'm also not really, I didn't look into it as to when these standards were set compared to when a lot of these houses were built on, a lot of these smaller, like in the R2 district. The standards might have been set well after those buildings were, were built. So of course they're going to be out of compliance now.
In the, in the appliances that I've done, rarely, rarely is there a property that has a greater coverage for building surface. And I suspect that, that is likely due to the fact that you would require a building permit for most of the structures and that would be caught by staff. And I believe that standard has been in place for some time. So it seems unlikely that you would sneak in a building that staff isn't aware of. In terms of impervious surface coverage, obviously smaller lots are more likely to have any over-coverage than the larger ones, but not necessarily. I've seen many conforming smaller lots that seems to have an appropriate sized house, garage, driveway, patio, and seem to cover it. But what I'd like to do is bring to you examples so we can see what the, if we do, obviously if we make changes to the code, I want to know what that looks like for different properties, especially based on different sized properties. So I'd like to bring examples to you to take a look at.
Okay. Yeah, that would be helpful, I think. Just when I look at these lots and I walk around, some of the smaller ones, you have house, a garage, driveway, it seems like impossible that you could meet our standards with using typical materials without having used special materials, which really weren't used, you know, porous materials were really not used until recently. So I just don't want to set people up to necessarily fail because it's impossible.
Sure.
And I think also one other thing is it's possible that we'd want to have some kind of, I think you referenced this beforehand, like an additional credit, like some of these people have, if you have a rain garden or something that's particularly, holds more water than would typically be allowed. One of these deep rain gardens that are specially constructed. And that might be particularly appropriate for some of these smaller lots. So that's something to consider, that there'd be an opportunity for a property owner to present that as a way to get extra credit. Not that we'd, it would necessarily be given to them offhand, like we just assign it, but if someone's coming in to do a project, that they could be given additional credit for something like that.
All right. Thank you very much. Does anyone have any information to share? Okay. Our next meeting will be on September 25th. And do we have anything that we know will be on the agenda?
Impervious surfaces will be on the agenda.
All right.
In terms of applications, I'm not aware of any other applications or items that'll be built for you.
Okay, very good. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.